Here.
Moore?
Here.
Janer?
Here.
Scott?
Here. Can we stand for a moment of silent prayers followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. There are no proclamations, so we'll go to interviews for the boards, commissions, and committees. A is the Building and Housing Code Board, Brian Crichton, are you here, Brian? I didn't see him. Okay, then we'll go to Museum Board of Trustees, David Halas. We all know you pretty well, but go ahead and tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to serve.
Good afternoon, thank you, yes, I know most of you pretty well as well, except for the newest member of the council. Welcome to Julie, and I thank you for the opportunity. I have served for about five years, a partial term and a full term on the Library Board of Trustees, and that came to an end sometime last year. I saw this as another opportunity. I very much appreciate the opportunity to serve the city that I live in and that I love, and the valuable assets of this community certainly include the public library, our art center, and one of my very favorite places, the public museum. So, I'm interested in serving. As you know, I serve as a pastor at St. Mark Lutheran Church in Sioux City, and am involved in a number of other community organizations.
Questions?
I have none, I just wanted to-
Thanks for your service, yeah.
Yeah, thank you for the five years you've put in so far. You're doing a great job, thank you.
You did a terrific job on the Library Board.
Yeah, thank you.
Reasonably believe you won't do as well on the museum.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you for applying.
Thanks, David.
Brian, we'll go back to you, I just saw, there you are. Yeah, that's okay.
Parking lot's full out there.
Well, everybody wants to come here today for-
Exactly.
What's on the agenda today?
The mayor runs a tight ship.
I don't know, we're gonna find out, hang around.
Good luck to you.
Tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to serve.
Well, I'm Brian Crichton, I'm a registered architect here in town. I think I've known many of you on the council. Just obviously have an interest in helping the public with codes, trying to interpret those, trying to help kind of guide that process a little bit. So, I've got over 20 years' experience doing healthcare, housing, retail, all kinds of different types of projects as well, K-12 as well, so, yeah. Not sure what else you'd like to know, I guess, about me. Part of CNBA Architects, I could tell you about that. We are a 55-person firm, four offices, I'm the CEO of the company, so I manage the company as well. But, yeah, very ingrained in the community. This was one of our projects, actually, City Hall, so, back in the day.
You were too young for this project.
I was just getting started, just getting started, so, yeah.
Thanks for applying.
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks for the application.
And thanks for your service, 185th, too.
Oh, thank you.
Great organization.
Yep, thanks, anything else?
We'll let you know.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Parking and Skywalk System Board of Trustees, Alexia Boggs.
Good afternoon, Alexia Boggs, I'm the Deputy, I'm the Director of Development for Ho-Chunk Capital.
You're the what?
Development Director.
Okay.
For Ho-Chunk Capital, yeah.
And you've served before?
I have, yes.
So you know what the requirements are?
I do.
Okay. Questions?
Well, I have one, and I usually don't have a lot, but then I get intrigued by answers and I want to know some. As far as when it was talking about specific ideas, future development improvements, Skywalk Systems, some of those things, you said "yes, lots" with an exclamation mark, and I believe you do, I really have liked working with you in the past. Is there any that jump out to you, or I mean, anything specific? I'll hear more, obviously, through it, but anything glaring to you where you wish we were doing or hope that we can do right from the jump?
I think the Skywalks in particular need more than just Band-Aid repairs. We've been, our budget only allows us for Band-Aid repairs, and I think they really need a major uplift or some capital improvements made to them, so they just represent our city a little bit better, in my opinion.
Well, careful, you're losing votes the more you talk.
I know.
I'm just kidding, I'm kidding.
Yeah, but they're just, they're just very dated, and we've been, you know, trying to keep up with leaks and leaks and where you walk through them and there's buckets for months that sit out there in those Skywalks, and so it just would be nice if we could spruce them up a little bit. And then also some other things that aren't, doesn't cost anything is continued art projects and stuff. That's something that I've liked, or I should say I've enjoyed seeing those type of projects.
Yeah, great, thanks.
Thank you.
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Parks and Rec Advisory Board, Barbara Ann Hookelak, I hope I didn't butcher that too bad, I'm sorry, come on up.
I have to put it down.
There you go.
Those who know me don't hold it against me, and Hookelak was close enough.
Tell us a little bit about yourself and where you want to, why you want to serve.
Okay, I'm a recent retiree, I ran the Physical Therapist Assistant Program. I founded it and directed it for 25 years, and now I'm on to greater and better things in my retirement. I've served on many boards in Sioux City, and I'm on the Plywood Trail Marketing Committee, et cetera, and I have been the recipient of usage of your system, whether it's the trails, the pool, Cone Park. I've had sons who've played soccer, so I've seen a lot of improvement since I've been in Sioux City over 30 years. But I do see a long way to go in terms of really making this a place that attracts individuals who want to come and live in Sioux City and take advantages of services that a city can provide of this size. And I'm particularly interested in things like health and wellness. I would like to see pickleball courts outside, inside.
You and quite a few others, I tell you what.
Yes, yes, and so my interest is that of service, and I think I offer a unique opportunity based on my previous board experiences and as a physical therapist and certified personal trainer, and generally as a person interested in providing a better community for recipients.
Questions?
Thanks for applying.
Thank you.
I would have dressed up had I known I was gonna be on TV.
Broadcast live, yeah, no doubt. You look fantastic, don't worry about that.
You're fine. All right, we'll move to the consent agenda, which is items three through 10C. Today, you can consider them to pass unanimously. Anyone wanting to speak on an agenda item, please, please come to the podium as I read that item and state your name and address for the record. If you want to come to speak on an item not on the agenda, please come up under Citizen Concerns. Again, state your name and address, I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
Three are the reading of the City Council minutes of January 2nd, 2020. Four is a resolution adopting the 2019 fourth-quarter supplement to the municipal code. Five is a resolution approving a GEMT fiscal year 2018 and 19 annual cost reports and authorizing the submission, their submission to DHS. Six is a resolution authorizing payment to SGH red-glaze holdings for the hail-damaged roofs and buildings projects. Seven are actions relating to agreements and contracts. A is a resolution awarding a service provider agreement to Sergeant Drilling for the rehabilitation of well number eight in Chris Larson Park. B is a resolution approving a contract to Bainbridge Construction for the Leach Avenue Reconstruction Project. C is a resolution awarding a contract to Sioux City Engineering for the Glen Avenue Reconstruction Project. I should have asked this question earlier, and I apologize that I didn't. We bid this last year. It looks like it came in more money this time than last time. We were bidding it reduced, weren't we? Did it come in lower? It's 2.9, right?
Yeah, just a fraction lower, very little. Gordon Fair, City Engineer.
Which is frustrating.
Yes, it is, we tried.
So, once again, maybe the contractors were right and we should have maybe just let it go last year, but...
Well, but, no, I actually had a couple of other questions, Gordon, and it's tough, right? Because I know we, as a council, have sat up here before and said we need to pay more attention to when we do bid these things, and make sure that we bid them in a way, or at least timing-wise where it's going to be lower, so I understand you were trying to do that. The question that I had, and Dave, I apologize, I was talking to your counterpart for quite a while last night and I forgot to ask this and bring it up, so Gordon, roll with me on it. I wanted to ask, I went to the public meetings, I remember the public meetings way back, and one of the things I brought up was the sidewalk connectivity. Do we have a plan as far as a sidewalk or anywhere to try to get up to that shopping center?
Yes, that is in the plans.
Okay, great, that was one part, and then the second part was, there was a lot of concern from citizens just about, I remember the alleyway was one of them, and working with a couple of the different owners, do you feel confident that we addressed some of those concerns or tried to incorporate them? I know some of them might be cost prohibitive, but...
Yes, we did address those, and we met with a couple of those people at the last public meeting we had, just prior to bidding this out.
Okay, I thought so because I got pulled aside one other time, and I think it was the same guy that was talking about his alley and trying to get to it and be able to-
He has full access, he'll have full access to his front yard.
Okay.
To his upper garage. He has an upper garage and the lower one, and the lower one's in the alley, and that's the one that's going to be inaccessible for a period of time. Small period.
But at least having that one part.
Yes.
That's perfect, those were the two big things that I recalled, and I just wanted to make sure they were addressed. Thank you, Gordon.
D is a resolution approving work order number 41 for RS and H Iowa for the taxiway eight reconstruction project at the airport. Items A are actions relating to property. Items A, 8A through D are resolutions setting the dates for public hearings on the proposed amended and restated urban renewal plans for Teton, combined Central Sioux City CBD, amended Donner Park, and combined Floyd River Urban Renewal Areas of Sioux City. Anyone to be heard on any of those? E is a resolution inviting proposals for the lease of land in the Donner Park Urban Renewal Area, announcing the intent to accept the proposal of Stewart Farms, and scheduling a hearing for property at the airport. Nine are applications for beer and liquor license, see the list come forward if you have questions. Ten are receipt amendments, see the list come forward if you have questions. Anyone to be heard on any of those items? Call the roll, please.
Brecken?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Janer?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Number 11 is a hearing and resolution approving plans and specifications for the 520 booster station facility improvement project. I'll move that.
Second.
The hearing is now open, would anyone like to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Call the roll, please.
Moore?
Aye.
Janer?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Brecken?
Aye.
Twelve is a hearing and resolution approving plans and specs for the City Hall Variable Air Volume Replacement Project. I'll move that.
Second.
The hearing is now open, does anyone want to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed, call the roll, please.
Janer?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Brecken?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Thirteen is a hearing and resolution approving plans and specifications for the Utility Pourbacks Project. I'll move that.
Second.
The hearing is now open, would anyone like to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Brecken?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Janer?
Aye.
Fourteen is a hearing and resolution approving plans and specs for the Tyson Event Center Cooling Tower Replacement Project. I'll move that.
Second.
The hearing is now open, would anyone like to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is now closed, call the roll, please.
Waters?
Aye.
Brecken?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Janer?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Fifteen is a resolution approving a pre-construction agreement with IDOT for the replacement and repair of storm sewer intakes and sanitary sewers for the Iowa 12 Riverside Boulevard overlay project. I'll move that.
Second.
Yes, sir.
Dave Carney, Public Works Director, this is just for us to do infrastructure repairs prior to the DOT commencing their overlay. This will have to be done regardless of a three-lane or a four-lane configuration.
All right, anyone who want to be heard, come on up, state your name and address, please.
Tara Bernight.
Can you, can you speak into the microphone, sir?
Pull the microphone up.
And just, this is just for the, it's not the lane configuration, that's the next item.
That's the next one? That's our next item, but that's all right, you're here. Okay.
Okay.
This is just for the actual storm sewer inlets and that, this part of it, which has to be done no matter what we do.
There's some storm and sanitary repairs.
Right. Anyone to be heard on that part of it? Okay. Call the roll.
Waters?
Aye.
Brecken?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Janer?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye. Now, sixteen is a resolution approving a pre-construction agreement with IDOT for the reconfiguration of the Iowa 12 Riverside Boulevard to three-lane roadway, and we're gonna let you speak today, but just so you know, we're gonna make a motion to defer till January 27th, so that we have more time for that, okay? I'll move it with the deferral.
Second.
Dave Carney, Public Works Director, I'm gonna just introduce Shane Tempickwitz with the Iowa Department of Transportation. He's gonna give a presentation about why they want us to consider going from a four-lane configuration to a three. Open it up for comments and questions.
He's gonna do a presentation quick, sorry. You're getting your steps in, I tell you, there you go.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to speak here this evening. Just want to go through a little bit of the history of the project that we have out at Riverside. This has been several years in work, so bear with me to spend at least a few minutes just going through the scope of the project, what we've done underneath development, and why we want to come with a proposal for the city about a four-to-three lane conversion. Originally, to start out, just in the concept of a mill and overlay, which essentially is milling off the existing HMA that's out there, placing a new HMA surface. We're also doing ADA pedestrian ped ramp improvements as part of the project. But we recognize that this is part of a community. This project doesn't stand alone just as it takes traffic through the community, but is active, a part of what goes on every day in these people's lives. There's schools, there's businesses, there's pedestrians along the way, and we wanted to make sure that we looked at this, that we took that into account. And safety was a big part of our look, and as you go through the corridor, there's things like feedback cameras that we have, prior concerns about speeding that goes through the community, pedestrian crossings, and maybe more importantly, you know, the school crossing itself for the elementary school as kids try to go each day to and from the school. So we started taking a look at the safety of the corridor and what goes on, and we started looking at the type of accidents. We started in 2016, we're looking at the type of accidents that occurred over the five years. There are head-on, rear-end, oncoming left-turn collisions, broad sides, side swipes, and there's also a notice that a lot of these accidents occur at intersections and entrances. If you plot where these accidents occur, you'll see they occur at, like, Paul West 19th, Wright Avenue, Hornick. And if we go even to a larger scale, looking at a 10-year history, those peaks continue to occur. So each one of those bars represent accumulation of where the accidents are that occur over time, and they have a strong correlation with intersections and entrances on the corridor. So we started looking at ways that we could try to address this situation, and we started looking at the four-to-three lane conversion. But we also were a little more concerned that as time went on, those trends even continued to grow. So that first five-year look was 2012 to 2016, and each year, we were looking at the accident trends that we had. In this most recent five-year look at 2015 to 2019, the total number of accidents had increased from 83 to 114 over each five-year peak. The total vehicles that are involved in accidents now are over 200 vehicles in that five-year count. Those are people that are losing their vehicles to go to work, becoming injured, maybe can't work, and so that's a concern to us, and we want to take the opportunity, if we can, to reduce likelihood of that continuing. The traffic continues to grow slightly out there each year, and we also looked at the crash rate. That's how many accidents we predict every 100 million vehicle miles that are traveled. We first looked at this project back in 2016, that prediction was 386. It has grown more than 20% now to 461. So the crash rate continues to grow through this corridor as it becomes busier. So why afford three-lane conversion? Well, it's effective in reducing the type of accidents that were identified. If you look at the Highway Safety Manual and research that's been done there, the crash reduction is from 19 to 47% when you implement a three-lane conversion. Here in Iowa, there's been significant research and projects. We see commonly a 25% reduction crash rate that is looked at for corridors and projects. Mostly this is because you separate out the turning movements. Those people that are taking the left turns are no longer in the flow of traffic. There's fewer lanes to cross for both traffic, vehicular, and pedestrians. They now only have three lanes to cross rather than four. So there's fewer conflicts. Also, by when traffic flows in a single lane in each direction, the prudent driver is the one who controls the flow of traffic. This is effective in reducing speeders, particularly those that are going more than five over the speed limit. So it's a cost-effective approach, because really what we're talking about is just paint lines. Where are we going to put the paint lines? It's the same roadway, same width, but now we're asking, should we be painting as two-way center turn lane down the middle and one lane each direction, rather two lanes in each direction? These are the conflict points that were coming up. Just to emphasize here, that now, when you make those left turns, there's only a single lane to cross. As a driver, you're not worried about people making left and right turns in front of you. It simplifies it, you only have a right lane in front of you for right turn, or that somebody's braking in front of you. This is shown out there, we have those examples. If you look at Wright, if you look at West 19th, commonly we have peaks out there, especially around school, where people are taking those left turns, and we saw those peaks and accidents that are occurring and elsewhere along the corridor. There's also hidden vehicles. When you have two lanes traveling near each other at the same time, the first vehicle can often hide the second vehicle that's out there. By removing that hidden vehicle, that reduces the accident, reduces the risk that you're gonna have that conflict and somebody making an error that leads to an accident. We also have had conversations with the school, and at the national level, there's safer routes to school is an important factor when people are going. It's been proven in research studies that children have difficulties judging gaps, how long it is for them to cross the street. So when there's somebody coming at a distance away, they have difficulty judging if it's safe for them to cross. Speed management is key for this, especially around parks and schools. The slower speeds also give time for motors to react. That's proven in research that's been done by the AAA. They've looked at what the fatalities are based on the speed that you are traveling. If a vehicle's traveling about 35 miles an hour and hits a pedestrian, there's about 30% chance of risk. Somebody speeding 10 miles an hour over that limit, 45 miles an hour, the risk of fatality doubles. So trying to control speeders in an environment where you have schools and parks is important. So the four-to-three lane benefits, we're looking to calm the traffic. We're also trying to improve the sightlines for the people using the roadway. We're reducing that traffic width that people have to judge, reducing the conflicts. We're trying to improve the area, the livability, by pulling that traffic away from the sidewalks. Some areas there is very close to the sidewalk. So we're looking for a safer community for both the vehicles and the pedestrians that are out there. We're also looking for a more livable community by having calmer traffic. It's kind of odd that it's we, the DOT, because often we're accused the ones just trying to get people places quickly, that we want to be concerned that we are also having a project here that has concerns for the community and the livability of it. We think it's a very good candidate. As I mentioned, it's lower than 7,000 vehicles a day. Those underneath 15,000 vehicles a day are considered to be good candidates by research done with the Federal Highway Administration. Up here in Northwest Iowa, we have plenty of other roadways that have similar traffic, similar businesses, similar homes. Sioux Center has 13,000 and growing, more than that now, actually. Lorm Lake has about 9,000, Arnold Park, 13,000, Esterville, 8,000, Rock Valley on US 18, about 6,000. Dakota Avenue, just across the bridge on Business 20, has over 12,000 vehicles a day. So being there at 7,000 vehicles matches well with these other corridors that have successfully done a three-lane conversion. Even here in Sioux City, there's been Military Road, War Eagle, and West 7th. What would this look like out here? This is just a quick example of a striping layout near West 19th. Shows the continuous two-lane on the right side, turning into the left turn lane that's there at West 19th and Paul. So this would be a typical layout that you would have through the corridor. Another area that we've received some phone calls about is north of War Eagle. And this actually is, will stay a five-lane configuration, just on the north side of War Eagle. When you get up by the Dollar General is where we drop one lane and it would go from a five-lane to a three-lane configuration. So we still keep the operations and the concerns there near War Eagle, we've heard. And we recognize there's a lot of stakeholders in this project. It's the communities, it's the drivers that use the corridor, schools, police, fire, emergency response, city staff and officials, and we, the DOT, and we've tried to reach out in partnering efforts over the last three years. Initially, I had a kickoff meeting back in January 2017 with city staff that included those people that I mentioned. It was the police, it was fire, emergency response, city engineering, traffic, that were all there. From that, they identified some other groups to speak with. We went and spoke to the Sioux State Schools Traffic and Safety Committee. They were very supportive of this, particularly with the safer environment around the school. They encouraged us to go speak to the principal, which we did. Mary Motts was the principal at that time. Riverside Community Group, we've been out there in the early onset to see what their thoughts were of a four-to-three lane conversion. We've also had presentations to the City Public Works Committee, the City Economic Committee. We also went back when there's a change in principals to talk to Riverside Elementary School. We also did door knocks on the businesses that were out there in 2018 to give them a chance of what they would like to see, have information from, and if they had questions about doing a conversion. Last year, we had the Public Information Meeting at the Riverside Lutheran Church. We sent out approximately 200 letters to business and residents along Iowa 12 as part of that effort. And then again tonight, to carry on the conversation, we also let people know that by sending out letters to those same people that we are going to have a meeting here tonight. So really, when we talk about the public comments, when we reached out, many were supportive of the safety and livability aspects of the project. There are some that are concerned about the travel times, that going a little bit slower, potentially being behind a truck or somebody that's driving slower than they like to will add delay to their travels. There's concerns about the railroad tracks near West 19th and potential backups if there's a train there. Last summer, from July through September, we had a camera out there. We videotaped it, we were trying to look for occurrences of where that was. We saw very few occurrences and things that didn't go very, when it did happen, it wasn't very far back on to Riverside Boulevard. We have discussed that if this does become an issue, if there's something more there that we don't know, we'd be willing to commit to putting a right turn lane there. We don't want to do that up front, I'll be honest, because it would have an impact there to the gas station and convenience store in the corner. To push that back, put in the radiuses for a truck turn, and the utility movements that are involved there, there'd be a rather significant impact on the parking, potentially even into the tanks. We're not sure they're full configuration, but that gets us into the corner where they're filling tanks are. So we'd rather start without that, if it is approved, and then if it becomes an issue, add that later on because of that impact. There's also concerns of backup on Iowa 12 by some local businesses. We did some site visits through last summer, looking at for observations of when it was busy. We were particularly told some lunchtime at some businesses. Occurrences of those vehicles backing out onto 12, we found to be extremely rare. To be using that language, it's one we don't design for very rare. We design for the 99.9% of the operation that's out there, and we believe it'll be successful. That also brings up whether this is a four or a three-lane facility out there, that if that is occurring out there more than what it is, that there's liability, legal issues there. We encourage businesses, if that's happening, to design their facilities such that they can accommodate the traffic, because it does create a legal liability issue for them as well. I would say the bicycle groups, when I say are very supportive, might have been an understatement. They were very strong in their advocacy, they very much liked the opportunity to try to get that a more friendly corridor for them to bike on. So overall, we think there's merit moving forward with the three-lane conversation. We provide you with an agreement that would allow us to do that, but this is also a conversation to go along if there's questions, issues, things that we'd like to have addressed. I know I went through this some rather quickly, there are some good resources out there. If people have questions, would like to find out more about it, I can recommend these three as an initial starting point for it. The video is very good, it's about six minutes long for those who would like at least an initial idea of what goes on with the four-to-three lane conversion. Thank you for your time, if you have questions, free to answer. If you have questions, free to answer.
If you leave it wide enough for a bike trail, which you're not supportive of, from what I understand, and I understand why you're not, aren't you just encouraging a car to pull over to go around somebody?
At four foot wide, it wouldn't be wide enough for them.
Oh, David, my boy, motorcycles and everything else are going to go around. I mean, you can tell me that's not going to happen.
Motorcycle could, I don't think a vehicle could.
That's certainly going to happen, and if the car pulls over and doesn't quite get over far enough to turn that, somebody's going to try to go around them. The other question I have is, you make a big deal out of the school kids, and I'm not minimizing the safety of kids, please, but how many kids live on the east side of Riverside Boulevard that don't get bused to that school? I think that's an important question, because I don't think it's very many.
We've sat out there in the morning, and there's probably very few. We do see some.
There's no house on the east side of Riverside Boulevard.
Do they ever run over and go to the gas station?
Well, that's, you can't stop that.
There's also the ball fields on the other side.
Not grade school kids, they're not going to the gas station. I don't, I don't think, I thought you had a deal, Brian, that you had to bus them that was across the major highway sort of deal.
No, if we have a safer route to school, we don't have that. We do have a safer route to school there. Sorry. Ryan Farrenholz, Twenty-Six, Twenty, Twenty-Eight Street with the school district. When we have a safer route to school, like that crossing right there at, it's Wright, is that correct?
Yeah.
At Wright and West Nineteenth. So we don't necessarily have to bus them if they're on the other side. It would only be if they're without, with, outside that two mile limit, or if they don't have another safer route to school. But I don't believe there's a lot of students on the other side of Riverside Boulevard.
I don't either, because you don't even have a sidewalk coming down West Nineteenth, so I don't know how, that wouldn't be a safe route to begin with. I don't know how you'd get them there if you had a safe route. Safe routes, when they're crossing the street, there's no safe route to get you to cross the street, so there can't be a lot of kids that you're not busing.
No, and the majority of them, that would be up the hill on West Nineteenth, would be going to Loos Hills anyway.
Right. So, okay, I just wanted to ask that question.
So a couple of quick comments. As far as the bike lane there, it's not our practice as the DOT to put symbols out for what a bike lane is. If it was something the city requested as part of the construction project, would we put one out there? Yes, we would, but we do not maintain them. So the city would be responsible for maintaining, if you want to put some type of marking out there indicating a bike lane. The other comment that I will do, just to put aside a little bit, some misinformation rumors, it was that we were going to close Riverside Boulevard during this. I'm not sure where the miscommunication or the information came from, but it will be open to traffic during all the construction operations that we have out there. Now, when we're milling in front of a driveway, or if we're placing HMA in front of a driveway, there's going to be some very short-term disruptions, but otherwise, traffic will be out there and it'll be at least one lane in each direction at all times.
I have two questions for you. Could you clarify the fifty, you mentioned the fifteen thousand vehicles, and if it's less than that, we're a good candidate, but if it's greater than that, then what?
So between fifteen and roughly eighteen to twenty thousand, at that point, you have to do more engineering analysis to see how it operates, how many turning movements you have, the type of vehicles you have that are in the corridor. There are routes that have over twenty thousand vehicles that are three lane configurations, but you do have to start being careful of what your capacities are when you start reaching that point. When you're underneath fifteen thousand, the incidences of any type of issues from a traffic capacity standpoint are not there.
My, my second question then is, when, when would you want to go to a four lane? I mean, how, because we were, what, at a two lane for a number of years and then went to the four lane? Is that accurate?
Okay. You're going way back, and the answer, I'll say the easier answer is, we wouldn't do a four lane today. We don't design and build four lane facilities.
You do not.
We do not. Not in an urban setting of that, with like Highway Twenty, yes, there's a four lane out there. But when we get into an urban setting, it's a two lane, a three lane, or a five lane, because you want to get that turning movement out of the way. You want to have those safety aspects that are out there. If you do a four lane, it'd be a four lane access controlled with left turn lanes. If you want to look at what we have for Gordon Drive as an example, I consider that still a five lane for all practical purposes, just as an access control median.
But you don't have the right of way to do a five lane.
Or the money, to be quite frank with you. This is really an HMA resurfacing project, so we're trying to do what we could cost-effectively to improve safety and the bounds and budget that we have for the project.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Moore, I think we'd have to see almost a double in the amount of traffic before you'd start thinking about going to a five lane.
I'm curious now, though, because you had that genius idea to do a roundabout. Now you would have been doing a single lane roundabout if you're doing what he wants to do. How would that have worked? You couldn't do, you wouldn't be doing two lanes around about with one lane feeding it.
Oh, no, you wouldn't. At the time, we weren't aware of this, that they were looking to do this.
Well, they started in seventeen, Dave, and you were designing that project and bid it last year. That's my.
It was designed, yeah, but that was, we're talking, that was back in fifteen, that we were talking about the roundabout.
You just bid that project last year.
Yeah, it, it was under, when our contract to do that was well before we were, we were approached about doing this.
Possible, but I'm not going to argue about it. It was last year, we rejected the roundabout, if you guys remember, as part of the plans for Riverside Boulevard going into South, or the Military Road going into North Sioux. But I'm just curious how that would have worked now. Wouldn't have worked very well. Okay.
Do you do, what do you do, what do you do roundabouts?
Sorry.
Do you do roundabouts?
Yeah, they do.
We can, yes. Usually, well, usually it's, if it's in an urban area, it's partnering with the city. So when you say we do, it's usually a partnership with a, or an agency, yes.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Go ahead, John.
The outsides of the new lanes where the stripes were showing, are those, was that stated that they're four feet wide?
Correct.
So you don't think that bicyclists will be using those, whether it's stated that it's a bike path or not? Because then I worry about safety there.
So the center is a fourteen foot lane. There's twelve foot outside lanes is what we're proposing, which leaves fourteen, four feet and change, because the paint stripe is actually on the outside of that. So it's about four and a half feet in width. The DOT usual stance on this, to Bob's point, is they can legally bike out there anyway. There's nothing to prevent them from doing that.
Right.
So from our perspective, especially since we don't want to maintain them, is why go ahead and put the markings out there? It's a designated bike route. People can go out there, they can use it, whether it's marked or unmarked to their own comfort level and skill level for that matter.
And then my second question is, this is going to be a resurfacing, so they're going to be grinding the top off now?
The HMA that is out there will be milled off, correct.
Okay. Is there any cost difference between, you know, for grading or anything like that that needs to be changed because it would go two, three, or is the grade, everything pretty much stays?
All we're talking about is how we're striping the paint out there.
Okay. Thank you.
But we would pay for the painting for the bike lane if we wanted that, not the initial one.
We, we would do the initial symbols.
They would do the initial.
Just the symbols, we would pay for.
And we would do the maintenance?
You would have to maintain the symbols after we painted them the first time.
Because that's not what I was told before, so I want to make sure.
I can't, I'll be honest, it's probably, I'll take some of the heat there. I can't say I'm a big fan of doing the symbols for something that they legally can already do. We always have concerns out there that sometimes where you put a bike lane out there next to a facility that has seventy thousand pound trucks, how much advertisement you want that is for the bike lane and mixing it together. For the skilled bicyclists, it's fine.
How many gravel trucks a day do we run down there? I mean, that's the problem. That's why, that's why, I'm, I know there's people here that like bike, and I understand that, but I'm not sure that with a bike trail a hundred fifty to two hundred feet away over and along the riverbank, that this is an appropriate place for it, and I'm kind of for that type of stuff, but not with, and that's why I.
That's why we've recommended not striping it, because you can, or stimmeling it, because the bikers can already bike on it if they choose so to bike on it. It just, I think advertising it as a bike lane makes someone think it's a family-friendly bike lane, and I don't know if I would want my young child riding alongside me.
I mean, it's a tough one.
Yep, yeah. Is there another design that could deter them from driving in that four and a half foot space then on a bicycle? Are we having anything to do with curbing or anything like that? Make the sidewalk wider?
Well, and it's all personal discretion, right? I mean, at the end of the day, it's going to be personal discretion. I, I really think if, and obviously I'm very pro bike lanes, I think that they make sense. I want to connect people to the commercial area of Riverside. I want, if they're going to enjoy the park and they want to bike up there, to be able to have dinner or have a burger or anything like that, I want them to be able to do that or go to the gas station up there if they don't go to the one that's already down on the south end. I want to promote that, but I understand that also that there are those risks. You want to be safe, you want to make sure that it's a safe corridor and area, but if you're going to be going all the way to Broken Kettle or Stone State Park or Dorothy Pico or anything, you're probably going to be an advanced rider anyway, that's wanting to take that route to go up there. Which I, which, hey, if I was a, if I was a cyclist, that's exactly what I would want to do. I would want to get on the scenic byway and go up there. So having that marking, I don't know how much, how many families you're going to have do that unless it's more on the residential side of it. You know what I mean? Not on the south end, it's going to be more on the north end. Just maybe getting to the pool, that's all I would say, is maybe they're going to the pool, is what I would anticipate. Again, we're talking hypothetical.
All right, other questions for these gentlemen before we open the public? All right, now, sir, you can come forward. State your name and address again, if you would, and.
Terry Burnett, Six-Two-Nine Pac Quay at Sioux City. I'm against it because I know what's going to happen, traffic. When them trucks, late at night, it's okay, you know, because there's hardly any traffic now since the interstate's built. But, you know, rush hours now, there's trucks coming from Hayward and Akron down there. There's lots of trucks. People get in, they'll be going in them other lanes, and I know that's what's going to happen. And it's going to be just as dangerous the way it is. I was coming up military a few, about a month ago, and I was turning in the, you know, the turn lane, and I turned right to the right spot, and I looked in my mirror, and I just seen someone was right inside of me. Phew. So, you know, somebody went by me, was using as a regular lane, which I could run into, you know? But I'm against it.
Right, thank you.
Another thing I'm against, I didn't know about, when I did military, when they blocked off Boyd Street. I used to drive that every day like that. Now, Pac Quay's the main street going down there. I don't see why they'd block that off, you know? Or gonna, they didn't do it yet, but.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else just come up and state your name and address, please?
I'm Cindy and I live on Paul Avenue.
Can you bring the microphone down just a little?
I'm Cindy and I live on Paul Avenue.
Need your full name and address, I'm sorry.
Cindy Langsaff, Ten-O-One Paul Avenue.
Thank, thank you.
And I'm against the three lane. Morningside and Northside both have four lanes, and Riverside is very busy and we need the same. And when you come off the interstate and you go down to the two lanes and then have the turn lane, you're going to be backed up onto the interstate. And if you don't live out there, you don't know how busy it is. And I've asked for a turn signal on West Nineteenth back in two thousand two, and the city person said it would take a year. The next one said it would take a year, and other city people have said, we'll put that on the agenda, and it never got there. And then the DOT said that was a city thing, and the city said it was a DOT. So which is right on that? To have a turn signal on West Nineteenth and Paul, it's a must. There's so many accidents there and school route, kids, when you go from Riverside Boulevard down to Paul, you can be sitting there through two lights before you get to turn. Other places have turn signals and we don't, but that is a must. And there's a gal back there, too, that agrees with me from Riverside, and there's others. And I had three hundred and fifty-five signatures clear back in two thousand two, and nothing's ever been done about it.
Is it a protected arrow that you want, a left arrow?
Yeah, all you need is the light on the pole just to turn. You don't need another lane, you just need that. It's a must.
Just want to clarify what you're asking.
Yeah, it's very must. And then when you have emergency routes, you know, the emergency personnel coming down too, you have to, you can't have three lanes when they're going down one and you need to get off the side, you know, make room for the personnel to go.
Yes.
Then that's going to conflict that too. So, and it's always busy. I think four lanes is what's needed, not three. Just new curbs, new cement, and new lines painted. I've lived there all my life pretty much, so, but we're not a rural area like Sioux Center, so I don't feel that would be good.
Well, thank you.
So please consider.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name's Justin Truie. My mom and I own JT's Pub at Seventeen Forty-two Riverside Boulevard. Our main concern being on the east side of that street is a lot of the west side businesses do have other access around through the residential. I know he did mention that we wouldn't be, you know, fully closed for any point of time, but that does deter some people not being able to have a secondary and a safer way to get into our establishment during construction. I'm sure they can address that if that's going to be different than what I understand, but also, they said that there's tons of semis. They'll be in there for the last almost five years. You can hear them rumble by the bar. I mean, you can hear them every part of the day. When we go in there in the morning to get changed from when we close down at night, they're always there for pedestrians riding bikes going down there. Now, I know there's several times when I'm going down my truck, I can switch lanes and go around them. That's going to almost not exist. We're going down to one lane, there's going to be nowhere for bikers to even go. You know, you get going down there and you get a semi going thirty-five, forty miles an hour, are you going to be on a bike going down that side of the road? I know I wouldn't. So just stuff like that is also, the main points of where the, where the actions were shown from what I've seen is that they're on the War Eagle Drive by Casey's, they're on West Nineteenth, they're on Military. So my, I want the four lanes to stay where it's currently at, but also I do agree that it needs to be resurfaced, and we also do need certain points, more safety in those intersections. So that was all, all I wanted to voice.
Before you sit down, could we pull up that, the map again, please? The one that you had earlier? I just want to, you to point out, I think I know where you're talking about, but I'd like to see it on the map.
Talking about the crash map?
The stack map or the, you just map the area?
Well, just.
Yeah, accident.
Yeah, there you go, I think.
There you go.
Yeah, we are on the east side, about a quarter mile before West Nineteenth. We're surrounded by the old Quality Plastics, I think it was called.
Yeah, I was going to say right in there.
Yeah, right in that area.
Yeah.
By the old brickyard, yep. You're kind of pointing at it right there.
Right there, on that side.
On the, on the other side, though.
Yeah.
Yep.
You're on the east side.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
No, you're on, yeah.
You're on the east side.
Yeah. Where that road kind of takes a right and goes back behind there. We're, our building's the right in between there.
Well, what, no, what I want to really understand is you said something about it would be closed, or the, while the construction's going on, or maybe I misunderstood.
That was our main concern. He did address that, that we wouldn't be permanently closed, because being permanently 'cause being permanently composed, closed for a small establishment like ours would, you know, would ruin our establishment as well as quite a few. So that was a part that I wanted to come and address. And he did say they wouldn't, but you know, any sort of even one lane traffic with as busy as it is, I think would even deter business from, you know, coming in there. And I don't know if anybody's ever lived on Riverside Boulevard, but it's nonstop from, you know, at least lunchtime until well after people are off, you know, into eight o'clock at night. So I feel like the four lanes, although it does pose some safety concerns like you talk about, I think the safety concerns are on those main streets, the West 19th, the War Eagle Drives. I think that's where your concern needs to be with, like she said, turning lanes or wherever it may be. But the rest of Boulevard, Boulevard is where the flow of traffic, you know, kinda goes faster, you know.
All of the semis that you say drive, you know, through there?
Yeah.
Are they staying over into the right-hand lane or, I mean, do you notice?
It will, it will depend. A lot of them do it with the right-hand lane. It all depends on the flow of traffic.
Cause they're going slower?
Um, it, yeah, most of them. But then you have, I mean, I've seen numerous times on, you know, during a week where they're even passing each other, you know. Since some semis, you know, go barreling down there at 40 miles an hour, some go 30, you know, it all depends. But I think you get those slower ones to, you know, slow down traffic. The other ones, they go rumbling by each other as it is. So.
What's the speed limit?
35.
And that's the concern, just so you know. I mean, that's what they're literally addressing is saying that we need to slow down traffic there because people are barreling way too fast. And so they look at data that says that by going to a four lane to a three lane, that it will slow that traffic down. So people are more safe.
I think they kinda, that's my opinion. They kinda underestimate how many houses and businesses are along there though. People churning right. I mean, just our side alone, once you get towards my bar, you have a storage facility, you have the Dollar General, you have Come and Go. On the other side, it's all residential. So people getting in and out of their houses, slowing down traffic to turn in there, it may seem like not a big deal, but it's, I think it's gonna be quite a big deal, stopping traffic like that. More often than you think, I think.
I understand. I, I think I come from a unique place, I guess, with this, with four lane and three lane, looking at it because I grew up and lived quite a bit of my life in Okoboji. And Okoboji has a three lane all the way from Arnold's Park up until McDonald's.
Right.
And if you've ever been up there in the summer, do you have any idea how many curb cuts are along that way? Trying to get across? I mean, you wanna talk businesses, residential, everything else? And you, someone said they waited through two lights? That's a, that's a dream in Okoboji.
You're forced to have that there because they can't.
Cause it's not wide enough. No, I understand.
If they could four lane that road, they'd do it tomorrow.
No, no, no. And I understand. I'm just saying from a safety.
The DOT would jump on that project.
If they could five lane it, they would, but.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't think they would four lane it, but they may be five lane. But I'm just saying, like, I understand that there is that. And, but you don't have the traffic counts that are even close to that to say, wow, we really need the four lanes there.
No, I agree.
So it's just tough.
Like Bob said, we, they don't have the room to do it. We do. So that's why we like to keep it four lanes. Thank you guys.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. We'll take a couple more.
My name's Janet Johnson and my husband and I own Riverside Car Wash. And we do get a lot of people that come in. And of all the people that come in, no one has liked this idea, including us. It is working well now. And I don't know why you would change it. You do have a lot of trucks coming down from Highway 12. And they do sometimes go fast. But a lot of times, people are going too slow too. There might be someone in the neighborhood who likes to take their dog for a ride and go down the Boulevard at 10 miles per hour so the dog can put his head out the window. And all kinds of things like this. And I just think something works. Why change it? Change is not always good. I know sometimes change is good. But this is one change I don't think is good. And I really encourage you to think about it some more because actually living there and doing it is different than looking it on paper to what it looks like. And that is my opinion. I would like to keep what we have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, I'm Bob DeSmet, 6005 Pine View. And I'd like to speak towards the bike lane issue. I think we have an exaggerated fear of bike lanes here in Sioux City because we are the largest city by far in Iowa. And the research we've done through the Sulaan Trails Foundation, we think we're the largest city in the United States that doesn't have any bike lanes. Where they are much more common and people are more used to them. We think going from a four lane to a three lane, we support it. We also believe that this was a natural place for bicycle lane. And it does help slow traffic down. And as was mentioned, it's legal for cyclists out there anyway. I've used Riverside Boulevard for years. You know, the four lane causes problems. People sometimes, they, they don't move to the inside line till they're right behind your tail sometimes. But, and it does increase the speed well beyond what the posted speed limit is. But we think it's a safety factor. The other thing I would just mention is, we also have several people from the north side, the west side, trying to get towards Riverside, to Riverside Park, to get to our trails. We look at bike lanes as an adjunct to the trails. It's a way to get there, to help people get there safely from where they live, which is one of the biggest weaknesses of our system from a cycling friendly standpoint. And I also know that the cyclists are big customers of the bars or restaurants along Riverside Boulevard. So.
What's your, what's your viewpoint on the markings, Bob?
Uh, I, you know, I think it makes sense to have, you know, some painted on this, in the, in the, in the lane. But, you know, once people get used to it, and if there's some posted signage of the bike lane, people get, it just becomes common. I mean, you go up to Sioux Falls, they've, they've, all the streets that are designated bike routes have painted markings on them. But I think, you know, it certainly helps especially initially.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, Bob.
Hi, Katie Bach, 277-56-K49, Hinton. I'm also the president of Sulaan Cyclists. And I know for a fact that we have several groups that use Riverside Boulevard many times during the week. We have a, a big following on Taco Tuesday night where we can have upwards of 75 plus riding along Riverside. We also know that we do have access to those bike trails. But there are those riders that are coming to Riverside for that ride. And they end up having to use Riverside Boulevard to get to the start location or get to the Sioux City trails.
Why is that? I'm curious. Because where are they coming from? Wouldn't they be better to find that trail that we just put in than they would be to go down Riverside Boulevard? And I, listen, I think you can have, I think you can travel on Riverside Boulevard because I've seen you do it.
Mm-hmm.
Whether you're three-laner or four-laner, it's, it doesn't matter to me. You're gonna find a way to do that. And I got no problem with that. But why, why if I'm coming down Military Road, would I not go find the trail? If that's really what my intent is, why would I not go find that trail rather than drive down Riverside Boulevard, I guess?
Well, there are other riders besides Tuesday night as well.
Right.
Like I go longer distances. I'm coming from Hinton. I go across like K-18 and I'm coming in to Riverside.
Right.
And I'm, I'm wanting to stop at local establishments like Navarides, JT's, some of the other restaurants or Dairy Queen. And so those aren't on the trail.
Right.
And so in order to be able to get to those establishments, we have to use Riverside to get to.
I get that part. I'm just saying if you're, if people are coming to ride on the trail, why would they not find the quickest route to the trails? All I'm asking.
We do try.
Obviously, you can take a look. I'm not a bike rider.
We do too. We do try. But then there's usually at least some part of Riverside that we have to ride on in order to get to a trail. So, but we would ride it regardless of whether or not there are the bike.
Right. I agree.
So. But thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Couple more and then we're gonna limit it, okay? So if you want to speak, come up now. This is gonna be deferred for two weeks. So we'll look forward to your phone calls and emails, but.
Yeah.
Three weeks. Three weeks. I'm sorry, we're not having a meeting on Martin Luther King's birthday, my bad.
I'm Tyler Miller, 1027 River Drive. For me, I'm on the whole other side of Riverside. So if there's one train, and right now it backs up to Family Dollar. So for me, anybody who wants to go to, or North Sioux, will now have to drive through the residential to get to North Sioux. Now what are the accidents on blind spots and putting the kids in the danger gonna do?
He, he's right. If there's a train on West 19th and people can't turn.
And Military.
And Military, and Military. They're gonna go through the side streets like you had to go through to Edith Harvey's.
Yeah.
Which was an obstacle course on its best day. And so they're gonna take the side streets through Riverside is what he's saying. And they're gonna, they'll end up getting to North Sioux. But it will cause some of that. Because you're gonna back up the traffic and not be able to use a, you're gonna lose a lane is what it amounts to.
Start turning by the schools and driving past there to get through there faster.
Okay. Anything else?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Ray Rowe. I live at 1619 Riverside Boulevard. I've been there for 52 years. Right now with.
Moved in there when you were about three, huh, Ray?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. You know.
I know how old you are.
Anyway, there's times right now, even if it's four lane, I'll sit there five to eight minutes in the morning, waiting to get out to head north up Riverside Boulevard. Cause I'm crossing two lanes, which is fine. If they wanna do what they wanna do, I'm gonna be sitting there for an hour. If you shut it down to one lane. As far as the bike trail, two years ago, we went to a meeting at Riverside Methodist Church. And everybody wanted the bike trail. But now nobody uses it. I mean, the city spent a lot of money down there. And there's not probably 10 people a day use it in summertime. I, I don't know why the white, the white people aren't using it. I have no idea why.
I think their, I think their argument would be they are. You probably just don't see them. But yeah.
I live, I live right on the trail, sir. It's right out in the backyard. So if I'm out in the backyard, yes, I can see them.
I, I understand. I'm just saying, and their argument would be you're probably not watching the trail 24 hours a day.
I understand. That's their argument.
Yeah.
And number two, what are you guys gonna do with the four foot? Just leave it there to collect dirt?
It'll be cleaned and plowed just like it is.
Be clean and plowed. So why are you wasting the money to put four foot down? Why don't you take and bring the curb out to there? Oops, just a second, and overlay that, put dirt back in there, give it back to the taxpayer. It's gonna save you guys a lot of money. It's gonna save the city money of washing it.
It'd cost more money to rebuild all the curbs.
Curbs.
But you're gonna do it now. Why, why don't you do it all at once?
I'm just saying.
Why put a Band-Aid on it, Bob? Why put a Band-Aid on it?
We didn't shrink the size of Morningside, folks. It's the same size street as what we had before.
I understand that. But you take a look at Riverside Boulevard. There's a lot of curb missing.
Well, I'm assuming that's gonna get fixed as part of this.
Curb is the city's responsibility. It wasn't part of.
So there you go. There you go.
Seriously, then why are we doing?
I'll say this. We will reveal more curb than what's out there. When we mill off in the curb.
Well, but there's a lot of, I mean, if we're not gonna fix the curb, why are we doing this? Seriously? Because there's a lot of curb that's not there.
Sure. We'll go over that, we'll go over that with them because we should be fixing the curb.
You're gonna fix it?
I'll, I'll look into it.
A lot of, a lot of curb, the city, or the highway commission plows out when they plow the snow. Which they can't help it. Cause it's rough, it's.
It never happens. It's always the contractor that did bad work. Ask Mr. Carney. But we'll argue that another day too. So.
I would just want to make one quick comment though. The thing about is drainage that is out there. Because there is zero drainage in that outside lane. I did bring up one of the pictures, I didn't have a part of this presentation by doing some, is that when you have a rain event out there with how flat it is, and the intakes that are out there because at the time it was designed, the spacings were larger than what they are today, it, it does, it floods that outside lane. You'll see that everybody drives just in that inside lane. That also leads to deterioration by having the vehicle in the traffic when it's wet, when it rains, when there's snow out there to be pounding in that curb and gutter line. And it does cause where most of the damage is, is others out there. So it does move the traffic away from that curb and gutter line to cause that damage.
Okay.
My biggest part of the whole thing is, I'm gonna have to sit there and wait 15, 20 minutes, maybe even drive curb down to Casey's to the stop and go, like turn around and come back. So I can go up to the Come and Go or I can go to the bar. Whatever. That's the way I'm gonna have to get out of there. I invited these gentlemen out two years ago to sit on my deck. And we'd sit there and watch them in the morning and the afternoon. Nobody showed up. I wanted them to see the traffic that's on that Boulevard. With four lanes now, you shut it down to two lanes, one lane north, one lane south, those poor people on the Boulevard are never gonna get out of there.
Alrighty.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right. We'll be back here in three weeks. Did you have any kind of response though to?
Yeah, you wanna put up the.
Some of the comments that were made?
The traffic crash. The one thing I did want to say is, several people said if it's not broke, why are we fixing it? If you look at the crash numbers we have on this street, the average crash rate state of Iowa is 296 crashes per 100 million miles traveled. We are at 386 in 2016. It's grown to 416 in 2000. So we are well above the average crash rate. If you look at the total accidents over the 2015, 2019, 114, you're looking at somewhere close to 25 crashes per year. You eliminate 14% of that, that's three crashes. More than three crashes, almost four crashes. That's eight vehicles most likely. That could be 16 people, could be more than 16 people every year that were taken out of crashes. That's the important thing we're trying to fix. If it takes somebody an extra 15, extra 35 seconds to 40 seconds to, to travel 1.75 miles, I think it's worth it. I mean, and if you look at three lane highways, the, actually AARP has a piece on it, talks about that the crashes for serious injury accidents are reduced at a higher rate than the overall crash reduction. So you're taking your higher injury accidents out of the corridor. That's what our point, that's what we're trying to fix. So I think it's a little broad to say, because they don't, they haven't been involved in a crash that it's not broken. There's, we're, and we're trending in the wrong direction. Right now, that roadway is trending in a upward direction. And not just because the rates going up and the number of crashes are going up, but the, the rate per million miles traveled.
Speed is going up and we don't enforce on that corridor either.
And this would calm that.
That's what bothers me. We hire additional police officers and our number of citations stay the same. Sorry, Pete, I know you're no cop. But we hire two or three extra cops and the number of citations is not increasing accordingly. And the way you calm traffic is you give somebody a ticket every once in a while. You don't, you don't go out and give them a warning ticket. You actually write them a citation. That's how you can so, solve some of that problem. I, I'm always, sit here in amazement. Of the 20-plus years I've done this job, and no disrespect today for engineers, I'm trying to be very gentle today. Hope you guys understand that. But you're the same guys that told me on Hamilton Boulevard, you gotta keep the medians in. And now you use Sioux Falls as a way to move traffic. And they don't have medians in Sioux Falls, guys. You know what? They actually have asphalt streets, by the way, up there, which we've never figured out how to do either. But, but we have medians and that was supposed to solve the problems. If that's a problem on this street, put medians in. They were, they were the answer all back in the 80s. You don't build them anymore. So what is right, guys? One-way streets in the 60s were the thing of, greatest thing since sliced bread. Now you wanna get rid of them. I do too, by the way, because I think it was a dumb idea in 60. And we should have never put them in. So that, you know, what is it? That's the problem I struggle with here. And, and you can give me all that trends, but traffic enforcement still is a big deterrent to moving through, too fast through a corridor. Especially a corridor of this size and, and of the speed and the trucks that are running through there. Cause I guarantee you, the trucks are running more than 35 miles an hour through there if you've, if you've ever driven that corridor. So when do we enforce the laws?
I, I will agree with you, Mary, that the police department has a marvelous capacity to influence the behavior, driving behavior of people. So if it requires us to ask them to be out there more, that's exactly what we should be doing. I don't know what their.
We've asked them to be on the interstate and I rarely see them out there. And that's why we hired the two extra cops.
I, I don't know what the stats would show us today, but.
Cameras are gonna go away. And then you're gonna wonder how you're gonna enforce out there. Because they're going away with this legislature. You can almost guarantee it.
You may, you may very well be right. I, I guess my total focus on this, and you're right, since you brought up the issue of me being a former police officer, my primary concern is the welfare and safety of vehicles being operated on the roads in our community. The police, again, have a great ability to, to help with that. And I think they are probably doing a pretty good job. I don't know the numbers, so I can't share anything with you. But, but boy, I, I listen carefully and I look at all the statistical data. And if anything allows us to make the streets safer, I think we are absolutely foolish not to take advantage of it. I do have a quick question regarding bike lanes. I, I know, sir, you said four and a half lanes on, or four and a half feet on the average on both sides. Is that, I don't, no, I don't bike either. My balance is awful. But, but Bob's back there behind you, Ray. I think, what's normal width of a bike lane? Or is there one? No such thing?
They carry it all over the place. I mean, there's bike friendly communities like Lake Tahoe where they just don't have the room. They're two-foot, you know?
What are you comfortable with?
There's some areas where they're fairly small where they have to.
Dave says the law is four foot.
A minimum?
Probably five foot, four foot, five foot would be probably more normal.
You're, and that's comfortable for bikers here, you believe? Four to five feet?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, most states, Iowa doesn't, Iowa has a passing law that just says safe and reasonable.
Okay. Yep.
All the states around us, most of them have a three-foot passing law.
Oh, okay.
And Iowa's behind the times there. But that you have to give at least three foot. In South Dakota, if you're going, if the speed limit's over 45 miles an hour, I think it is, it's six foot. In South Dakota, if you're going, if the speed limit's over 45 miles an hour, I think it is, it's six-foot. So it's three-foot below and six-foot up, as far as safe passing, so you don't feel close.
Ashto guidelines, there's a four-foot.
Four-foot, okay, thanks.
One more time, Ray, and then we're gonna get out of here.
I agree with Bob about the police. They need to be out there. I'll tell you what really quiets them down. You get a state trooper sitting there. That really quiets them down. Because on any given day, any given evening, you can sit on that deck of mine, and those cars are going anywhere from 40 to 50 to 60 miles an hour. And motorcycles are the worst. I agree, it needs to be slowed down. But I don't think the two lanes is gonna make your answer there. I think it's really gonna hurt.
So what are we, just for clarification, what are we hoping to discover in three weeks' time?
You'd have to ask Mr. Moore, he asks for that.
I did. Well, it ties in with my earlier question. Is there anything you could add today that would help us take into account all of the discussion and the points made? Because we've got three weeks now, I wasn't sure how many weeks we'd get. I appreciate it, though. I think we do need that. I looked at this whole event, right or wrong, as being kind of a very short notice, very sudden type thing. I know you've had all those meetings. I'm not sure how many, if any, I attended, or how many the city council were invited to. But I want to make sure we clear the air on this and have full discussion. And that's where I was coming from with this. I don't know how much, maybe all of you out there are tired of hearing about it, but I'm not. So I wondered what you had for some responses to the remarks that were made that I thought some were valid and some may raise more questions.
So to start with, it is a conversation. That's why we wanted to be here. We didn't expect to rush to judgment by any means on one side. It's not, the DOT is trying to force us through. It's much more the other way that we look at this conversation, is what does the community want for their roadway? Because it is the people that live in the community that's there. And it's looking at the broad spectrum of the users that's there, the safety of the community, the travel times there. There's not a silver bullet. Each community we've gone to that we've had discussions on, it's very similar. The through-travel time versus the safety is a common theme. So those aspects are there. But I can say, and all those that have switched over, those that are on the list, they had similar concerns. But once it was in place, they liked it. They came accustomed to it. Sioux Center's probably one of the biggest examples, that they had a police chief who was adamant against it. Afterwards, he became so proactive, he told anybody, when we had a traffic director in the state DOT, if they had questions about it, that they could call him about it, and he would bring the endorsement. You can still get a hold of him today. And I would do that. Reach out to the other communities is my recommendation that has them. See how they're acting and behaving. Because you are not going to sit there for an hour waiting to get out of your driveway. It's gonna be very much the way it is today. And I'll go one step further. My boss may have a little bit of a heart attack on this one. But if we go and we do it, we want to be safe, we want it to work. We're not gonna sit idly by and say, oh, that failed, and walk away. But we come back and do something and work with the city to be proactive. If after we do this change, and after a few years of getting traffic numbers, we don't find it's having the positive impact we expect, we come back here and work with you and your staff. This isn't like one and done, and we're going away. We're here to be partners with the city going forward.
I think that's big.
Thank you.
And I appreciate that.
I don't think anybody disagrees with that.
Yeah, well, quite frankly, I mean, the write-up was what it was. Maybe you have more background than I do, but I'm learning a lot of this for the, hearing it for the first time, actually. I'll just admit it.
I got it with the homework.
The background.
Yeah. I mean, that's what I know about our discussion.
Well, I learned a lot of things today that I didn't find in the homework. I learned today that maybe the city is going to pay for the curbs that are non-existent on Riverside Boulevard. Maybe the city's gonna pay for other items that I don't know about, that I haven't thought about, because we haven't had, I haven't had the conversation.
No, but it happened here.
I agree.
I mean, that's what you're talking about.
Because I don't know that the curbs are. Listen, if we go out there and do a crappy job, then why do a job? If you're not gonna fix the curbs, then don't do the street. Doesn't make sense. Drive out there, there's curbs. And you can tell me you're gonna mill down, I get it, I know what a mill job is. But if there's no curb there today, there's no curb there after you mill it. And that's gotta be solved, Dave. I mean, this is ridiculous, we don't have a speed?
That's the first time I've heard that comment. And I didn't go out and?
Well, you gotta drive out there once in a while. I can tell you that they don't have curbs, and you're gonna be looking at a few hundred thousand dollars in curb repair. Not that that's gonna make or break the project, but we certainly oughta know what that is going in, and we oughta put a number in there, in the budget. Because we certainly don't want to go out and put asphalt down and have asphalt curbs when we're done.
And you've added to the conversation. I'm not being critical of your presentation today. You added to it, especially with the, at the time of rainfall. And, because I've driven that Riverside Boulevard several times myself. And that picture was very telling how it is. Where is the drainage? There is more discussion to be had. So I'm not being critical of any presentation. I'm not being critical of any comments that were made. I think they were all good and helpful. I'm just saying, I didn't have enough information when I did my homework this weekend, so I did what I thought was the right thing. I emailed the city manager and the mayor and said, I don't think I have enough information here. I'd like to defer it till we get more information. Well, a lot of information came in today.
That's what my, yeah, my hope was we'd have that discussion today, because we didn't have it previously.
Okay, thank you.
The other thing, I do want to know, Brian, I want to know how many kids. Listen, if there's 50 kids crossing that, sorry, I don't care what you want. I mean, I've lost a lot of votes voting for safe route school. I want you all to understand that. That's of primary importance for me. And if you can't understand that, I get it. But it is for me. So I want to know how many kids are crossing that street. Because I've never not voted for, when Ray was back doing some of the stuff you're doing, I never didn't vote for a safe school for kids. Sorry, and people get upset with that, but I have never not, and I won't tomorrow. But if it's a couple kids, that's a little different than 50 or 60 or 70, and I don't think it can be that many, so.
And Bob, I will say this. We did, I personally have done observations, sitting there watching traffic and the kids in the morning. And you're right, it is not 50 or 60. It is single-digit type of numbers.
And we've got a crosswalk there.
Yep. It may be a half a dozen or so that you may see, depending on the weather, depending on the day.
It'll just be important for me to have that number as well, so. Alright, any other discussion before we vote on the parole? Call the roll, please.
Gretkin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Chaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Citizen concerns. Anyone to be heard on something not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will go to council concerns. Mr. Gretkin?
I have no concerns, thank you.
Today?
Today, maybe tomorrow.
Julie, your concern?
I have no concerns today, sir.
Alright. Mr. Waters? How many do you have today? We want the list first before we?
Yeah, exactly. Honestly, not a lot.
Not a lot today?
I talked to Dave Carney about a number of projects. The only thing that I did want to, one of the things that I, when we bring up issues here, whether any of us have brought things up, I think sometimes we don't do a good enough job of circling back and knowing where they are, or I get confused of where they are.
I have a couple of those on my list today.
So one of the things that I did have a meeting just about labor, contracted labor versus employees and stuff, and I know we gave Nicole a little bit of direction, and I know we're busy with that. Do we know what language we can put in contracts at all, or looking into that? I know California is taking some drastic steps and maybe taking it a little too far, or they need to at least be able to give exemptions in different industries. But I just wonder what Minnesota language looked like and what ours could be moving forward. And so I don't, I just didn't know where we were at.
Sure. Dave and I have yet to meet again regarding the language recommendations. At this point, I know there has been some resistance to including in the construction contracts in general from an enforceability standpoint, because there really isn't anything at the state level that assists us with that at this point.
Well, put it in and let the state tell us that we have to change it like they did with minimum wage, because there are cities in Minnesota, for sure, that are doing that.
And I guess I need the clarification. Maybe we need to present the language to you if you want the direct language that Minnesota is using.
I would love to see that. Yeah, if you have that or something.
Yep.
Of what other communities are doing or anything. And if it's just specific to construction jobs or what. I mean, because that's what I was talking about. I know that it's affecting other industries and careers that maybe were unintended, but I just want to know.
There's a difference between doing, I guess, having access to wage and our informants of employees, but then as far as taking a look at that and who's going to monitor that and how, of course, we lack jurisdiction for some of those items.
Kind of where I'm at, what jurisdiction or authority do we have to control that?
Why do you not? You do it on a Davis Bacon job. You do it on a state job, on some state jobs.
Well, the contractor does, by virtue of the Davis Bacon is required in the contract to do that.
So if the state of Iowa can do it, why can't the city of Sioux City?
And we can require that they file the reports, but then the question is, what if, I mean, they're having independent contractors on site, then what's the next step the city would do? And those are things that we have to look at.
And we oughta turn them into the Labor, the Department of Labor, because it's against the law.
That's what I'm saying, because I just want to be able to say, I want to see your records of who's checking in. Are they an employee or a contractor? And I want to be able to pull that and see whose numbers are going in what.
So do we regard that in the contracts?
No.
No, that's why we're saying we want to look into that.
If it's federal funds that are being used, it really depends on the source and use of funds as to what they're claiming.
You've been at a Davis Bacon wage shop here for so long, you wouldn't know how to enforce one of it. The last one, I think, was the water treatment plant. And thank God the unions went down and checked to make sure they were employees, because we didn't bother to. Shouldn't be their job, they have to do that. But it shouldn't be ours. We take Davis Bacon wages, we assume that we're supposed to be the ones that are checking that. That's what, you sign the agreement when you do a Davis Bacon project.
So I would just like, yeah, if we can have an update or anything, any language or anything we can look over, mull it over.
And we will bring a recommendation. I mean, staff's initial recommendation was that there were some hurdles, but we will take a look at it and see what the possibilities present that.
Okay. I see out in the audience, Mark, what's the projection of renewable fuels? How are things going down there?
Mark Sims, Utilities Director, it's obviously under construction. All of the building and those types of things should be done late February, early March. There is a commissioning period that's, I guess we call it a cold commissioning period, that we cannot inject gas into the pipeline, takes roughly two weeks. We're trying to find ways to expedite that. And then there's a hot commissioning period that we can't inject, but we obviously have to take samples and prove that the gas is of adequate quality and so forth. So I think, you know, the quick answer to that is we're probably looking at April, May before we're fully injecting and starting to receive credit for that.
That's so stressful.
It is.
Every time we ask that question, it's a later date.
Yep, the contractor that, the vendor, I should say, that we had to use because they were the low bidder, has been problematic in terms of their timing, their shipment schedule of the equipment. So we have weekly phone calls.
And that's just it, and I know we talked about this, and I know the mayor's brought it up, and I hope we can go after them for something, or say, you cost us hundreds of thousands of dollars.
We can.
Now, without a bond, you're not gonna collect, but that's good. I don't know why a supply bond's that difficult. It's the easiest bond in the world to write. I don't know why we wouldn't have required that.
We have, I believe, a performance, or standard performance bond.
Not for that. He's talking the equipment. That's entirely different than the contract.
EMT would have submitted a, I don't know if it's called a performance bond.
The bonds were a little bit different on this project, but I would have to go back and double-check. There were two separate bonds that were submitted on this. It was a little bit different.
One would be a supply bond, because that company's only furnishing the equipment, which is putting the contractor that you have a performance and maintenance behind, scheduled, correct? Because he did the same thing to the same contractor in Fremont.
We can review that and provide a report.
We assigned that equipment to that contractor, is how that worked. I don't know if you have a supply bond. If you do, then you've got a little hope, but otherwise, good luck. What else you got, big boy?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I literally feel like the mayor of here. The longer I sit, I just get frustrated and want to know where things are. The last thing that I'll bring up today, at least, and I need to talk to Steve Hansen about this specifically, but I've brought it up in countless meetings, and I brought it up before all of the council, and I just, I'm curious of your thoughts, or at least just putting it out there, is I've talked with Steve about raising the blinds every night so that people can see the beautiful museum that we have. And so, and because a lot more people are in our downtown now, especially on weekends. And I know that Steve, his answer would be, you know, that number one, the machine to bring them up and down is expensive. And number two, that any sunshine or long exposure to sunshine is gonna damage those artifacts. I understand those arguments. And so that's why, especially in the winter months, if you raise them at 5:00 PM, and then you put them back down when you go into work, like, you're not gonna lose anything. You're not getting any sunshine that's gonna be in. And so I don't understand that in the winter. So I wish we could push for that. And the second thing is that the motor, I was thinking about it this weekend, and I apologize for being frustrated about it, but it was like, why in the world do we put glass? Floor-to-ceiling glass? Who would have made that decision? Why would you pay for that if you're not gonna show it? If you're not gonna raise the blinds and showcase what's behind it? Because otherwise, it just sits dark.
Well, you could tint the windows and not, or only take the blinds up.
Yeah, or you could treat the artifacts that are right there in the window, or position different ones that aren't going to fade. Yeah, I think there are other solutions. I just was driving by, and I found myself thinking like, well, why in the world is there glass? Who approved there to be glass? It's a beautiful feature, but if you never utilize it, it's just... Anyway, I think I must be frustrated today, I apologize. But that, if we can just follow up on that, if there's an opportunity, or if we can, I'll text Steve and talk to him, and maybe at least in the winter months, we can make sure to pull them up, and pull them up when we leave work and put them down when we get there. I think that's all I got, Mayor.
How do they go up and down? They're just so big that they're motorized?
Yeah. I'm pretty sure they are, aren't they?
My understanding was the motor that's there is not working right now, and it was gonna be, it was gonna be costly to improve that. But they can still bring them up. I mean, you can still bring them up manually right now, is my understanding. Because I know they go up. Steve, in fact, for the lighted parade, when I went by, Steve stopped me, and he was like, well, you notice anything? And I was like, no, what are you talking about? And he was like, come on, I got the blinds up for you and everything. I was like, well, I'm focusing on the candy and the kids, I guess I missed the blinds, but... I think it's just, I think it's absolutely beautiful, and it's amazing to drive by at night and see that. And I want us to showcase things like that in our city more so than anything.
Even just more storefronts lit up.
Yes, well.
More storefronts stay open at night.
Yes, past 5:00.
What do you have for the good?
We have our 2020 legislative priorities, and I want to be one that would go make a trip to Des Moines this month.
If you think you're getting an argument out of me, you got the wrong guy.
Yeah, and so Marty and Bob, I'd like to make sure we arrange that trip, Yeah, and so Marty and Bob, I'd like to make sure we arrange that trip, and I, it's a day I can get away to call in our legislators.
Does the council-
You can go too.
Anybody that wants to go, the more the merrier.
That's what I'm asking, is I just didn't know how it worked.
You all can go.
Well, in the past, we would have legislators come to City Hall, and we would go through our agenda items, but I think maybe a better way might affect them on their turf, so to speak.
Council members, we kind of envisioned almost like a mini trip to Washington, like we've done, where we go out early and have very focused time with the various legislators.
And bring members of staff to talk about different priorities?
And bring members of staff that could add value, yes.
And independent of the youth commission's visit?
Yes.
Yes.
You're going to still do that trip, aren't you?
I'll still do that, absolutely, I'll do that trip. That's probably one of the most fun trips-
There you go.
You assign me to. And then secondly, now, just hold on here, just getting an update of where we are with an animal control board of volunteers. I'd like to at least pursue that, okay?
I'm okay with that one.
Really? Okay.
I guess-
I think we need it, because we have switched, we have switched the responsibility and liability from the dogs to the dog owners. And I think we need a citizens' board to help with that enforcement and with that, everything that comes with it.
I think you need to involve Cindy, so she's-
Well, and I was actually-
Absolutely, but it's a huge shift in responsibility.
Because that's where I was going to just respond quickly, was just saying that I didn't, I have some reservation as far as forming that, because I look at Cindy that's been doing it for 30 years, or however long she's been in this business. I would trust her judgment over a group of six citizens that love their dogs.
It's absolute-
You need to make sure that you tell her that, because she felt like she was left out of the process, I can tell you that.
And it absolutely has nothing to do with Cindy as far as, I'm not judging her, I'm not being critical. I think we need citizens' help in the process of enforcement and come up with ideas. Cindy enforced an ordinance and did the best she could with an ordinance that I won't publicly talk about now, because it's gone away. But we still had dog bites. We still had 139 dog bites in one year. That's over 12, almost 12 bites a year, a month. That's like four bites a week. And that never really came to my attention the way it did when we had to go through the discussion we had. I thought the discussion was good. So it's not about Cindy, I want to make that clear, because she-
And I wasn't implying, or I wasn't meaning to imply that.
But I want Cindy to know, it's not about her job and what she's doing. I think she does a great job. She knows how I feel personally about it, because I've had animal control issues personally, and she handled them marvis, marvelously. I mean, it was just really top-notch service. It was all, I just think we're at a point where we need a citizen board to help with shift of responsibility that we have made. That's been a huge move, movement from behaviors of dogs to dog owners.
I would tell you, there was a citizens' advisory, our animal control advisory committee probably started 2005, 2006, maybe somewhere in there, and I had the fortunate opportunity to, not really, to be part of that, appointed by the council at the time.
He was a captain of the dog pound.
Oh, my lord, I'm telling you, it turned into a nightmare. There was just a fight about one animal after the next, and I, I'll be surprised if Cindy says she wants any part of this.
Okay, I agree. Well, we can at least ask her.
Absolutely.
You mean an advisory board?
Pardon me?
An advisory board?
Or whatever your-
Advisory board would be to the council, like all of our boards and commissions.
But you're going to have to call her.
Well, I agree with you, Mayor, I agree with you on that. I'm just asking us to take a look at it. I haven't studied it. I mean, so for example, what came out of our, part of an example that came out of our discussion is we didn't truly have, we had kind of a dog leash law, but we didn't really. Voice control was the other part of that ordinance. I didn't realize that till we got into the depths of what the ordinance was. So now we have a leash law, 100%, and not voice control. So it's those kind of things that our citizens could look at, and I would hope dog owners would be on the committee, because they know what it's like to own a pet and what you have to do and the responsibilities. That's all I'm asking for, is that you'd review that ordinance and update it. How long have we had the ADA?
They will take it away from us.
1990.
And we never updated our ordinance for that. That kind of thing. That's what I'm talking about. That's all, that was an exciting meeting today. Julie, and I wanted to also welcome you again.
Thank you.
The first full-blown city council meeting.
Thank you. It was a fairly tame one.
Well, this was as mean as we get. Right, anyway, well-
Two things, Mark Jensen's house, sorry, I shouldn't use the name, but it's public